For joining us, this is the city council member meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty. I want to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. And before we take your business, I'll just say a couple of quick things. First of all, congratulations to our returning city council members for reelection. And thank you to those who submitted themselves for public service, which is always a daunting task. And we hope, we hope they stay involved in civic affairs. Congratulations on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the, just say this real quickly and then we'll move on. But the Federal Express Job Fair that was held Friday at Phillips Community College was a big success. And basically, anyway, basically, Federal Express is hiring and Memphis is hiring a lot of people. And Jimmy Mayer, who's a former resident of Helena, found out that Federal Express had worked out in Cleveland, Mississippi, and a few other cities in Mississippi, a plan to bus people from Cleveland and other places up sixty-one and also Marion, Arkansas, to Federal Express every day and back to help them have gainful and good employment. And they were able to stay in their homes and it was a big success. Cleveland had a hundred employees and Federal Express, three buses every day. And so it's been a team effort involving especially Mr. St. Columbia, your son, Joe St. Columbia, Jr. At the Community College, the Chamber of Commerce, Arkansas Workforce Services has been a big part of this. Gosh, Rotary Club, I'm going to forget somebody. But anyway, our biggest commitment was to get them up there for the application process, which was yesterday. And we agreed to pay for the transportation up there to get them onboarded because public transportation is an issue and to work on a permanent solution. We had a full bus yesterday of forty people that went up and we had about twenty-seven cars that took others. And then we'll wait to hear from Federal Express how many of those who were pre-screened on Friday actually become employees and how many of those actually need public transportation. And we are talking to a number of different entities about providing that solution for them by the time they actually begin to work. It's not seasonal. Federal Express is growing dramatically and hiring dramatically. So I guess what I've said is if we can't bring the jobs here, we'll take them to the jobs. And as long as they live here, they can, it'll help them with their families and their life here. That's going to help us. So that was a big success. And we were hoping for twenty-five, we got seventy-eight people. And they want to come back. Federal Express said it was their best job fair they've had this year of the several cities in the mid-south area that they've gone to. And that's something I think we should be happy about. So that's a, that's a big success to be win. And we want to follow up with that and make sure that it continues to be for our, our people. COVID is down. Active cases are down. County actually looks pretty good relative to other counties. Having said that, there are big spikes across the country and across Arkansas. And we're kind of very cautiously waiting for the fourteen days from Halloween and Election Day to see if we follow that national state trend. So far, the numbers will be. All right, I just want to say those three things. We'll call the meeting to order this. And also want to welcome KJIW as usual, the hell in the world, and Rick Kennedy is, is returning to Helena. Well, I think Rick is the person on the call tonight on the meeting tonight. We want to welcome you back to Helena, Rick, and we're glad you're back. Having said that, Madam Clerk, call the row.
Davis?
Here.
St. Columbia?
Here.
Crockett?
Present.
Franklin?
Here.
Franklin's here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Six present.
Here.
Hello.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Six present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then the next item on the agenda would be the minutes. But we don't have any tonight, so we'll pass, we'll pass on, pass that and go to the treasurer's report. And Ms. Turner, you're recognized.
Well, I mean, I don't have a treasurer's report yet. I'll have it for you next week. But the only thing that I want to ask or inform the council of was some repair costs that were needed at the landfill. Mr. Jones came by and spoke with me and the mayor earlier today. And the compactor needs to be repaired. And it'll cost, well, the estimate is about ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. I just sent you guys an email with a copy of the estimate to the, to the city council. And I kind of wanted to know if it was okay to, well, I wanted the council to approve this, to have this compactor repaired. You, of course, you guys know that the compactor is very crucial to landfill operations because it helps us to reserve airspace, to maximize airspace. And it also maximizes the useful life of the landfill. And so I think we haven't been, hasn't been operational for the last couple of months. And so like I said, to save airspace, we kind of really need to get this thing repaired. I know it was last minute, but we just, I just found out about, me and the mayor just found out about the estimate for late this afternoon.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure we, we, let me get my thoughts together. When we bought that compactor years ago, the compactor, we bought that, I think, under Jay's, under the Holloway administration, if not the Holloway, at the end of Willis administration, we, because Bob, Mr. Gaston came in at the last minute and Ms. Crockett was like, it kind of forced us to buy a new compactor. What Ms. Crockett did, it had to be right when Jay, because Ms. Crockett, yeah. Ms. Crockett made sure we got extended warranty on that. We all voted, Ms. Ford, all of us voted to get extended warranty on that compact because it was like six hundred thousand dollars. And I was looking at one online, where Walmart got theirs. So I'm pretty sure that we got an extended warranty on that compactor.
Well, that, that compactor, you know, if you remember, that's the situation we had with Aljon and Aljon went out of business and no warranties. On them. And so we were left in a lurch with that. And so whatever, whatever warranty we had on the Aljon, it's null and void. That, that company, I don't even think that, that particular company even exists anymore. So, and like I said, this is something that, that's needed at the landfill. I think, I don't think they've been having it for a couple of months. They've been using the dozers. And like I said, even, you can ask Andre about it. He's very familiar with landfill operations and he knows how critical it is to have a compactor there so we can, you know, you conserve airspace as much as possible. But Ms. Franklin, as far as that extended warranty was concerned, I believe that, I, I think that Mr. Gaston said that, that they didn't get the warranty, for whatever reason. They thought they would, they thought they had requested the warranty, but for some reason that the papers weren't signed or something like that. I can't remember exactly. But in any event, that, that we had a problem with the company going out of business anyway. I don't know if you remember that or not. I'm sure some of the other council members probably remember that.
Any other questions, Mr. Turner? So the question before the council is whether or not to approve the estimate to repair the Aljon compactor so that the landfill can, can compact the garbage in the new cell, which extends the life of the, the cell. And then the, a new compactor with a five-year warranty is approximately half a million dollars. The estimate that this company's come back with is, is just over ten thousand dollars to repair the engine on the one that we have. And so the, the question for the council is whether or not to approve or agree to, to pay that estimate to fix the Aljon compactor so that it can be used. And the new cell is open and being used now. So when you don't compact, for those listening, you don't compact the trash, you lose a lifetime in your cell. It actually costs you money. I hope y'all can hear me.
I just got this information this afternoon about six oh six PM after the meeting started. And help me out with some clarity on this. It says that the engine is what, lower than the other? And it said they will try. So you, does this mean that this may not work?
Well, they're taking some engines from another machine and putting it in that. And they said it may be a hundred percent lower and they'll try to get it to normal, but that may not work. But that's the effect of functioning of the, the, the compact, the compact will compact the trash better than what they have now with the, with the bulldozers.
It's a hundred horsepower lower than the other, the new one.
No, you don't, Bobby.
Go ahead, Bobby. Bobby Jones, you're, you're recognized.
We dealing with a nine hundred horsepower now. This one here that we're going to take the motor out of is going to be a eight hundred horsepower, but it will still work.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia?
Yes, sir.
It's going to cost us more than ten thousand dollars if we don't get that thing fixed and compact the.
Indeed.
Out there. So I, I make a motion that we go ahead and pay the ten thousand dollar estimate and go ahead and get it fixed.
And Mr. St. Columbia's made a motion that we improve the estimate for the Aljon compactor repair. Is there a second?
Second.
Who, who is that? I'm sorry.
That, that's me.
Is it Don?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Emily's most, any other discussion about the motion?
Yes, sir. Question. I don't have a budget in front of me, but I would, I know we would have had some provision for repairs in the landfill budget. How does this impact that line item? Are we still within it? Have we exceeded it? Where are we for the year?
Yeah, I looked at that earlier. We've exceeded the, the budget for the repair costs. But if you guys remember, we also budgeted for the general fund to transfer some money into the landfill to help them with some of the costs because we had anticipated some loss of revenue from St. Francis County and the City of Fort City. So we're still about, we had budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for that. And so we view, we've transferred about a hundred, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars into the landfill, which leaves about six, six, seven thousand dollars left that we can use. And so, but I was hoping we could use that money to get the repairs done. And with that, those, those appropriations, I should say, the landfill does have the money in their checking account to pay for the repairs.
I have a. Doing the repairs. Yeah.
Lift Truck Service Center in Little Rock.
I don't have the information on this. Is it the same Aljon model ADB five hundred that we repaired in two thousand eighteen?
Hold on, man. Yes, sir. Mr. Valley, yes, sir.
Okay, what's? Pardon me? What, what is the total that we repairing?
Thank you. Ten thousand. Mr. Turner have that invoice in front of him.
It's ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah. Ten thousand eight hundred and fifty?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And what's the name of the company?
Lift Truck Service Center Incorporated, Little Rock, Arkansas.
Service.
Yeah, Lift Truck Service. Let me see if I can send you a.
Send it to my address. I have the, that we did in two thousand eighteen to repair it, the same piece of equipment. And I was just trying to edit that while y'all were talking.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, at that time, Mr. Valley, they were trying to charge us fifty-five thousand dollars.
No, no, no.
Seventy-five thousand.
That ain't what I'm talking.
Okay, okay.
That might even, trying to do the ordinance, that's all.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? If, if not, Madam Clerk, call the row.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on, I want to go back to Ms. Forrest's question. Perhaps I missed the answer to her question. Was it, is it possible to get what's needed for the same side rather than going down to a lower horsepower, I believe it is? I mean, it's.
Bobby, you want to take that?
Yes, sir. This, this the best way to go right here. I mean, it's just the horsepower, just we're going down a hundred on the horsepower, one hundred percent on the horsepower. We can still actually drive the same piece of equipment. It actually would actually work with that piece, with, with the horsepower being that low. So we can actually, we still can use it.
I think with Ms., Ms. Davis, if I'm correct, this is a motor that we have in another piece of equipment.
And another equipment we transfer to the Aljon.
So it's saving us money from purchasing another motor. And so we don't have to purchase a motor. We're using a motor that we already have. Yeah, this is just costing us to have it taken out of the other piece of equipment and putting it into the Aljon.
I understand that part. I was just reading in the notes as Ms. Forrest was reading what, you know, stated in saying that you all understood that we understood that this may or may not work.
Well, they were.
Be the same size.
Yeah, the horsepower may be reduced, but it shouldn't.
Yeah, that, that's all. It's the same size motor.
If I can, I think that's a good question and it is an estimate. And my question was kind of like that. If we're going to end up having to do, you know, ten thousand dollar repair estimates every month or two months or three months, it would be more cost effective just to get a new one with a warranty. And talking to everybody that knows more about this than I do, frankly, it was agreed that it was worth the, because a new one is a half million dollars or more, it was worth it. They feel like they can get it fixed. With a new cell, as Ms. Turner actually pointed out, you don't, you need compaction. It's important. It's very important, but it's not as important as later. So if we get another year out of this for ten thousand dollars, you know, that's pretty good. If on the other hand, a year, a month, a month or two months or three months from now, we got to come back to the council with another repair estimate, then I think maybe it's a good idea to question whether we, we should, it'd be more cost effective just to, to get a move. But we thought it was worth the risk of seeing, and they think they're pretty confident they can fix it, so.
And they're taking, and they're taking the motor out of another one that we have to put in. The older one that we have to put in this one and for ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, this one, the, the motor worked now in the old one. We just got a lot of, of, of wiring problem. And we're going to, like I say, take this, this motor out and put it into the newer, uh, uh, compactor. And I'd have had the company come down, look at it, and that's what they recommend if we want to save money.
Any, any, any other questions, Ms. Davis?
No, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Like, yeah, good question. Other questions, any other questions, comments? If it's not called the row.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Six, yes.
That's all I have for now. I'll have the, I think the regularly scheduled council meeting is next Tuesday. I think that was the regularly scheduled council meeting. So I'll, I'll have your financial report, treasury report at that time. If there's anything else you have any questions about, you can ask me now. You can, you know, always call or email.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, under new business, the first two items on the agenda are being moved until the next meeting. So we're going to start with a designated mutual aid agreement for firefighters between Helena West, Helena and Barton Fire Department. It's a discussion unless, unless something's changed, we're, it's a discussion only. And I believe Assistant Chief Demarcus Boren is on the call, on the Zoom to talk about that. Chief, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Can y'all hear me?
Do you want to tell us about that?
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, right now as it stands, we have a mutual aid agreement with just about every city in Phillips County. We have a high call volume for these cities in the county because we respond a lot out in the county. We render aid when called. And most of the time we are called for just about every situation that they have because they're a volunteer department and we're career, meaning we have guys on duty, ready to go at all times. So to cut down time, we respond. And those mutual aid agreements have been put in place years ago. It's, they, they, they were put in place underneath Reginald Wilson. So we've been responding to Barton for years and they come and help us when we call as well. So right now, I, I've been talking to, to the ISO. And what we're trying to do is get credit for the men that they have on their staff. So if we were to change it from mutual aid, meaning we're only responding when called and we're going anyway, nothing's really changing, to automatic aid, meaning we'll get a call for their area. And if we was to just make this small adjustment, we'll be able to receive points for our ISO taking credit for their men. So instead of us hiring new additional personnel, we can just use the men on their roster to help reduce our ISO rate. So by just changing it from, from a mutual aid agreement to automatic aid, the only thing that's going to change is the, is, is, is the communication system, which is already in place because we have guys on our department that's on Barton Department, as well as me, Chief Brown, and a lot of our captains and officers on this department, we work the communication system for Barton. So it's not, nothing is really changing for us. All we want to do is change the title in order to get credit for the men that's on their roster. And it'll allow us to use their name to respond to Helena issues, whether it's fire or hazmat or any other situations that we might have in the city. So it gives us additional personnel as well. And all we will have to do is train with them four times a year. So we'll train once every quarter with their guys. And that's something we can't already do right now. So once again, nothing's really changing with the title. So we're coming to you just to get permission to, to continue forward with the legal process of Mr. Valley and talk to municipal league and some other agencies to make sure we got everything in place that we need in order to get this accomplished.
Great. Any questions for Chief Boren? We're going to the mutual aid agreement for Barton. All right. Thank you, Mr. Boren. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, as you recall, in the next, on the last meeting or two, we discussed the purchase of three pre-owned sanitation trucks. One of them has since, per the council's request, was driven over here to be inspected and has sat on the lot on, on Ohio Street there behind Municipal Building. And I think some of you have had a chance to see it. Of course, we haven't used it. We added it to our insurance temporarily, so it'd be covered while it's in our control and custody. But we haven't used it yet. And there are two others. Anyway, Mr. Valley and then also Mr. Jones, of course, is on the call as well. So I'll recognize y'all to talk about that.
Yes, you all, can you, you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
You all had, the city council had discussed this, this matter before. And as the ordinance that, that should be available to you, that, that Madam City Clerk has provided to, to you of raising the competitive bidding on these issues, it's the three, put in one ordinance. And this would be a waiver of credit and being authorized in the purchase of those, those trucks. But it's, it's simply straightforward. If you all, if you all want to go through with the purchase, you're waiting for them to be in a purchase of their trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Mr. Jones, did you want to weigh in on anything?
Uh, yes. What's, I think the actual price is seventy-five thousand for these three trucks. Yeah, seventy-five thousand dollars. They're good trucks. They're running good, good tires, good motor. And I recommend that we go ahead and purchase instead of buying brand new, spending a half million dollar purchase of new for now.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions for Mr. Valley or Mr. Jones? Ms. Ramsey, what's the ordinance number?
Sixteen.
So we have an ordinance in your packet that Mr. Valley drafted and it's ordinance number sixteen. Make sure you've had a chance to review that and at the proper time or accept a, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia, I so move.
For the record, Mr. St. Columbia, are you moving to spend the rules of place for the third and final read, reading the title on?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Ms. St. Columbia, moves that we put ordinance number sixteen of twenty twenty regarding the sanitation trucks purchase on third and final reading.
Second.
Ms. Ford, I believe that was second to motion. Any other questions or discussion about the ordinance? If not, call the row.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Franklin? Crockett?
Yes.
I have five, yes, one absent.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Title is, if I may, the title is ordinance waiver compared to bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code Entertainer Section fourteen, picture eight, three oh three, authorized the mayor to contract the purchase of certain property for the city of Helena with some related, related purposes. Need a motion to adopt.
I so move, Joe St. Columbia.
Second. Second.
Ms. St. Columbia moves, Ms. Ford seconds the motion for file adoption of ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty. Any questions or comments? If not, call.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, um.
Ma, ma, my interview for just a second. Earlier, you all had the discussion about the Algon, uh, compacted, you all voted. But, uh, I have now prepared the, the ordinance, uh, now emailed to everyone, uh, compared to being the waiver ordinance. It says what Mr. Turner says, it's ten thousand eight hundred fifty dollars left truck services. If you all want to go ahead and adopt it tonight, you don't have to wait two weeks if you already voted to authorize it. That would just mean cleaning up in this meeting versus waiting to another.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Valley. Uh, that's great. Fast work there. Uh, any questions, Mr. Valley, about that? So this would be ordinance number seventeen?
Yes.
So there, so Mr. Valley has emailed everybody a copy of a quickly adopted or quickly drafted ordinance number seventeen, the way compared to bidding on the Algon, uh, repair estimate, uh, just over ten thousand dollars. Any, is there a motion or a second? In a second.
Joe St. Columbia, I'll make the motion. Go ahead and do it.
Ms. St., uh, Ms. St. Columbia moves that we, uh, uh, put the, uh, that we waive compared to bidding on ordinance number sixteen or seventeen, I'm sorry, on the Algon, uh, compact.
Is it about placing that on this, uh, third and final read and reading title on it?
Yes, sir.
Placing on third and final reading. Thank you, Mr..
Second.
Mr. Jay Lee seconds the motion. Thank you for that done. Any questions? If not, call.
Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Six yes.
Uh, thank you. And so the next would be a motion for, uh, final reading and passes of ordinance number seventeen. Mr. Valley, do you want to read it or?
Uh, yes, one for me. I'm sorry, I was taking a couple. Uh, yes, sir. Uh, it's the ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty. The ordinance waiver compared to bidding in accordance with, uh, Arkansas Code of Entertainer Section fourteen fifty-eight three oh three. Authorized the mayor to enter a contract to purchase and or repair certain property for the city of Helena, West Helena and for other related purposes.
Is there a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia, I'll make the motion. Uh, what is that ordinance number?
Seventeen.
Eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Ms. St. Columbia moves that we have the option for ordinance number seventeen with final reading. Is there a second? Is there a second for final adoption of ordinance number seventeen?
Second.
Ms. Ford seconds the motion uh, to file adoption of ordinance number seventeen. Is, are there any other questions or comments? If not, call.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Valley, for your quick work on that. Um, you probably saved us at least late three or four weeks on compaction, which is translated into actual dollars. So we appreciate your fast work on that. Uh, okay, so we're going to move on to the next thing, uh, water sewer issues. Uh, I just kind of set it up, Mr. Collier, and then let you, uh, let you add to the comments. Uh, the, the test Texas east, you said, just trying to give you an idea geographically where this is. If you're going over the Helena Bridge towards Mississippi, you take a left at the, you take a left at the light from Columbia. And you, um, are from forty-nine at the visitor center. You take a left like you're going to Mississippi and you're going down. I think it's, I think it's the second bridge, Mr. Collier, on the left-hand side, you'll see a, a field. And in that field is, it looks like it's flooded. It's actually, um, it's actually sewage that, and we've had sewage leak. And that area is in the vicinity of the Texas Eastern Plant, which is why we mentioned Texas Eastern. Uh, Texas Eastern Plant, that was a big, big round. I'm saying, some of y'all already know this, but for those who don't, the, the round, uh, what used to be containers for oil and gas for Texas Eastern. There's a pipeline that goes to the river from Houston. It's no longer active, but it is legal. And I guess they could turn it on, uh, if they needed to. They would load barges over on the river. Uh, and there's a pipeline and it goes into those storage places and, um, but they, they don't use it anymore. And it's, uh, but they, they do only keep it legal so that they could use it if they needed it. And it's not for sale either because I asked him that question in case anybody was curious. Uh, they're, they're, they're keeping, keeping, uh, keeping it, uh, in case they needed in the future. Anyway, um, it's a remote area. It's difficult to get to. And, uh, the, um, problem is pretty dramatic. And Mr. Collier, I'm going to let you take it from there. If that's okay. Take yourself off mute, Mr. Collier. While we're doing that, so, so Mr. Collier has, has been involved in that, uh, and, and received two estimates from two vendors on what it would take to, uh, stop that hemorrhaging basically down there and, and, and get ourselves, we reported, I think, Mr. Collier will tell you, we've done all the appropriate legal, um, processes that we're required to do under the law, but we are also required to fix it as soon as possible, for as you can imagine. So, Mr. Collier, I'll let you take it over now that you're off mute.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm, I'm on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I can hear you.
Uh, again, this is an issue that, uh, has come up and, uh, it's going to have to be addressed as soon as we can. Uh, we got to have the State Department, uh, Health Department is involved in it. Uh, this is something that has to be reported, has to be reported to the state once you find out you got that problem. Uh, we have a fifteen-inch, uh, sewer main that, that comes from your, uh, lift station one that goes to the ponds. Uh, there is a breakage in it, uh, and there's, this job is asking too big a task for the water company to do. So I had to have, uh, some quotes, uh, from another company, from two different companies. Hopefully these quote will do, uh, and, and, um, with your approval that we can have it done as soon as we can. I, uh, what the, the, the competence that I have, and I, I, I think Ms. Sam, Ms. Ramsey sent it to you, you all. Uh, one company is, uh, Reese Construction Company and is out of Forest City. This, uh, construction company is the one that originally put in, his father originally put in the sewer system. He knows all about it and, and I would prefer, uh, using him if we can. Uh, his estimate is, as you can see on your paper, it says, uh, thirty-eight thousand and six hundred dollars. And then we have another company, which is called Triple G, uh, Evacuating Incorporated, uh, and it's for forty thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, I don't know much about that company, but it was just a company that I was just trying to get the comparison and what it's going to cost to get the job done. But it's just like I say, it is, it is very, uh, imperative that we get this job done as soon as we can. Uh, the longer we let this sewer, uh, continue to spill out, uh, there can be a, uh, we can be tarred for it if, if we don't get the job done as soon as we can. So I'm asking you all for your support to try to, uh, uh, approve this as soon as you can.
Uh, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Uh. Yes.
Do you have funds available in the water company to handle that at the present?
Well, the short answer is, the short answer to that is yes.
Okay. It's something we have to do. You can't leave that raw sewer out there. So, yeah, I, I'm for getting it done. Health Department's going to be down on us if we don't.
Yes, sir.
So what do you need from us tonight?
We would need to approve.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we'll approve it.
Um, but, thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. Before we, if you don't mind, before.
Bid, pass them.
Before, before, before I take that, um, I was going to ask Mr. Collier myself if, if there if there's any, wha, wha, what noted differences are there between the two estimates?
Uh, nothing but the prices. The prices and then, uh, the, uh, the experience. I, I know the, as I say, the Reese guy, he, him and his, his father put the system in and he knows exactly, you know, he knows all about it. So.
They put the system in, uh, that, the one that we're talking about that's leaking, this broken?
Sir, yes, sir. He, they put in the whole system itself, him and his, and his father. He was eighteen years old. The one that I'm calling now, call now, he, uh, was eighteen years old when he put it in. So, and he pretty well knew the system and knew where, you know, which way it runs and everything.
Do you have more, uh, go ahead, Mr. St. Columbia.
Uh, they ever give a reason why it broke, why, uh, it, it, it broke down there? What caused it? Do they have any idea?
Uh. Uh, no, you don't have a reason. Uh, it's possible because over, over time, you know.
Just, okay.
How long ago was it that it was put in, this current one?
Uh, I, I didn't ask him exactly where, uh, he looked like, he looks to be probably fifty years old now. So it's probably about at least thirty years.
I'm just wondering about other areas now, uh, places down that, that same area, uh, because that is a, a hard area to get to down in there. Of course, they have, I imagine they have a layout, a blueprint of where the pipes are and all, don't they?
Yes, sir. And they, 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 they can get that from the, um, the city engineer or either from me.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we should have that anyway. Um, so, Mr. Valley?
I, I was trying to get the name. I don't have that email. What's the name of the company?
Okay, we have one company, which is Reese Construction Company. Can you hear me?
One you recommend?
Uh, Reese Construction, Construction Company. Uh, R E E C E. Construction Company.
Thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And where's the site?
West to what, sir?
What, where's the site?
Uh, it's over at, it's right off of, uh, uh, Old Highway over there at Texas Eastern. Uh, you know what Texas Eastern is over on Old, Old Highway?
You said Texas Eastern?
Texas, yes, sir. You know, it used to be like a gas, whole gas and different stuff over there.
I didn't need the name.
Okay.
Yeah, we basically just refer to as the Texas Eastern.
Right.
We were right, but I, I, one more question, and I'm sorry for all the questions. The, either, does either company guarantee your work for any period of time? So if it, you know, once it's completed, if it ruptures again in sixty days or six months or, or anything like that?
Okay, I did not ask for a guarantee on it, but I can, can get that.
But it's a lot of money and it, it would be good to know that the, the, whoever does it. Um, and other questions?
Yeah, uh, I, this Chris Franklin, uh, you do know that Helena Improvement District is supposed to keep it clean around there for their drainage. I know we're talking about the sewer line, but Helena Improvement District, they also had some kind of a contract with Texas Eastern back in the day to make sure, because they were supposed to clean all it, it's a ditch down there where that, that, um, that, when they're finna do that pipet, it's a ditch that hasn't been cleaned out since, uh, Mr. Adams passed away. So it, it's, 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 it's a ditch. It runs through where all it's supposed to go. The ditch's been covered up. So that's part, maybe part, part of the issue. Uh, yeah, I probably want to talk to Helena and, and, um, Helena Improvement about keeping those ditches cleaned down and by, by that line. Because that could make that line rupture, because the ditch had been, had been dug out in over, I know, five years. So, yeah, I probably want to get Helena Improvement District involved in it, because that's part of Helena Improvement over there as well. So, Mr. Mayor, you probably want to talk to Mr. Frank Clancy, uh, Mr. Joe St. Columbia. He's a part of Helena Improvement. Uh, y'all need to make sure y'all checking on that property down there because that's part of Helena Improvement District. They need to, uh, clean that ditch out down there. Those, because I went down there a couple of weeks ago and you can't get through there. It's a railroad track that runs across. There's a ditch that, that, that's normally cleared out. You can go up on that bridge. We used to go up on it all the time and it's a ditch that runs through to, to push that to those sewer pumps out there. So Helena Improvement District has some responsibility with that as well.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Franklin, uh, Joe St. Columbia here. Yeah, that's why I asked the question if they had any idea what caused that breakage. Uh, I knew that ditch was down in that area. Uh, and I know there's no work been done on it, so, uh, it could not have been damaged by the Helena Improvement District.
Well, if the, the ditch ain't been cleaned.
If that ditch needs cleaning out, I'll see, I'll, I'll say something to, uh, Mr. Clancy and find out about it.
And, and thank you, but the ditch is, it, the dishes needs to be cleaned out anyway, Mr. St. Columbia, because that's, that's, that's what he gets paid for. That's probably why we have a lot of, uh, our stuff is not flowing right, because the ditch that runs from Moore Hunter House, it, that ditch goes all the way out back there through Old Highway, cuts through and it goes back there to the river. None of those ditches are being cleaned out. Those, that's why we have those problems. That's why you have a lot of flood issues, things like that. I guarantee you, all the trash and stuff has built up, has caused that pipe to, 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 to break. Because, you know, it's too, it's too much trash back there. One man can't do it all. You all need to make sure that you all are taking, talking to, uh, Helena Improvement to make sure, because they should be, they're, they're responsible as well as we're responsible. Because when the di, when, when that, when that ditch was getting cleaned out, we never had any problem. You know, you know, it's a big area for Mr. Clancy to clean. And I think I sent you our pictures last time about some of the, we have these same issues where stuff happens. It falls back on the city, but you're paying Frank Clancy. And I think I asked before that Frank, Frank Clancy started being at some of these meetings so we can address that issue. And we, Helena Improvement District pays him and a lot of this stuff is not getting done. So I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you, I mean, Frank Clancy get paid, um, a nice piece of change. And I think that stuff needs to be done correctly because that falls back on the city. The city shouldn't take full responsibility. Helena Improvement has money too. I think, I do believe they should, they should help out with this, because if they had kept their, their, their property clean, we, the problem would be in this bad of a shape. Because they, because my saying was if you dig these ditches out, stuff will, stuff will flow right on through. So that's part of the problem. If, if you got this thing covered up your pipe or, or even whatever the case may be, Helena Improvement District needs to be aware of what's going on. And I think that when we have issues that could concern certain part of the Helena Improvement District, they should be aware of it. And they should, somebody should be here so they, so we can, uh, throw our, throw our concerns to them as well, because we should, we shouldn't, the water department shouldn't have to fit the bill when they're supposed to clean it out. It, it's sewer, it's lines that they're supposed to clean out all up under, it's a line that runs from, from, from the bank on out to the river. You can, you can, you 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 can't, you have to get somebody in to walk the front end.
I I I got your point. Mr. St. Columbia, would you be willing to report back to us and check with the Helena Improvement District?
Yeah, sure.
I called in the council.
I'll check on it.
The the issue before the council is sewage uh part, and um I I have one question, Mr. Carter, though, and would you have any objection if if the, if it does pass? That a motion be made that just says forty thousand or less? Um, so we could ask some of those questions between the two companies about guaranteeing their work and that kind of thing. Do you have any objection to that? I just want to make sure that if it ruptures again in three months, you know, that they that they, and it's and it's their fault, of course.
Yes, you know, they will be responsible if it ruptures in the area where they're working in, but not in no other area.
No, no, I know. I mean, if it's not their fault, it's not their fault.
Yes, sir. Uh, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any problem. I would think that they would, they would, I would, should be able to get a sufficient answer on that. That should be no problem.
Is that any, is that okay, Mr. Valley, to do it that way?
What's the second company's name?
Uh.
G.
Triple G.
Well, it says forty thousand, two hundred, but I don't think two hundred is that big of a.
Yeah, but G, Evacuate, Evacuating Incorporated.
Say that again?
Triple G.
Triple G.
Evacuating Incorporated.
Incorporated, okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, I can edit this ordinance to 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 show Triple G evacuating or Reese for a price of forty thousand, two, two hundred dollars. Uh, I I'd change the order to say that, cause I'm drafting ordinance eighteen as you all are talking.
Okay, well, okay, thank you, Mr. Valley. Any any other questions on?
You can do it either way. The authorized, the waiver could have been up to forty thousand, two hundred dollars after your question.
Okay.
I thought he said forty thousand.
The highest one was forty thousand, two hundred.
Yeah, but I think, I thought the mayor just said that he wanted to authorize up to forty thousand, cause he didn't think the two hundred dollars was a big deal.
Oh, okay.
I don't think they're gonna not do it for two hundred dollars. It's up to y'all. I'm really more concerned with the, you know, the guaranteeing their work.
Yeah, guaranteeing the work, okay.
I'll ask both of them about that.
I'll take care of that.
The guarantee on their work would be in writing, not just verbal.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's it's just a lot of money, so. Pretty standard, that's another thing. But anyway, any other questions about this particular issue? And we could move on and talk about the mitigation plan while Mr. Valley is 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 working his magic on that, if you want to. But before we do that, any other questions on this? Okay, if not, uh, Mr. Mr. Carter, if you want to hold on a second, I don't go anywhere. Uh, I think Mr. Valley's working on, uh, is that right, Mr. Valley? You're working on ordinance number?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm all done with it. It's ordinance number eighteen. If you all want to authorize up to forty thousand dollars, I I have written in in the letter a minute.
You you want us to go ahead and talk about the mitigation resolution? While you're doing that?
Sure. Uh, you can go ahead and do this ordinance, what I'm saying, ordinance number eighteen, it's ordinance waiting to compare to bid.
Okay, all right, sorry. Um, okay. So what is the will of the council?
You need, Mr. Mayor, you need a motion to, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, I'll take your motion now. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, our ordinance eighteen, uh, we put on uh final reading, third final reading.
Mr. St. Columbia, maybe if we put res- uh ordinance number eighteen regarding uh the sewer leak estimates in uh on the uh Texas Eastern site up to forty thousand dollars be put up, uh put on third and final reading. Is there a second? Is is there a second? Ms. Ford seconds the motion. Mr. Ramsey, uh, any other questions or comments? If not, call the row. Ms. Ramsey? Ms. Ramsey? Ms. Ramsey, are you still with us?
I'm with you, Davis.
Yes.
Pardon me for for a minute there. I was about to come across the road.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Somebody said mute me out, but I've been hollering, yes.
Okay, six yes.
Uh, motion passes, put it on third file reading. Mr. Valley, do you want to read the motion, I mean, read the uh ordinance?
Uh, yes, sir. It's ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty. Uh, an ordinance waiver could have been in accordance with Arkansas Code Annnotated Section fourteen fifty-three oh three, authorized the mayor into a contract to repair certain property for the city of Helma West of Arkansas, and for other related purposes.
I move for passage.
Mr. St. Columbia, maybe for final passes of ordinance number eighteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford seconds the motion. Are any other questions or comments? If not, call the row.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, there.
Oh, wait, that that's emergency clause, that's what I had to type.
Thank you, Mr. St. Valley.
Oh, hold on.
I'll make a motion and we move the uh the emergency, uh, approve of emergency clause.
Mr. St. Columbia, maybe if we approve the emergency clause on ordinance number eighteen, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford seconds the motion. If there are any other questions or comments? If not, call the row.
Franklin? Franklin?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Nice guess. Okay, I think we're done, Ms. Valley.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for, again, for all your uh prompt work on that. And thank you, Mr. Carter. Uh, okay, next item on agenda is resolution for mitigation plan. Uh, the city requires us to have a a mitigation, emergency mitigation plan in order to receive federal state funding. East Arkansas Planning Development uh has a joint meeting of mayors and other agencies every two or three years to develop a plan of action in case of a disaster. That plan was adopted at that meeting, not too long, I don't believe, before I became mayor. I think it was in twenty eighteen. And I've looked through it. It's actually, it's actually pretty good and uh pretty, pretty interesting. I kind of wish you would have had it, uh.
No.
Easter storm, but anyway, it's it's really good and and we're required, it's already been um approved by the state agencies and federal agencies that are involved. However, they require us to approve a resolution so that we have a mitigation plan on record in order to be eligible for FEMA and Adam funds in Arkansas. And the resolution is attached to your packet. It's 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 pretty simple. But uh, the bottom line is that it meets the uh, it meets the requirements that FEMA and Adam uh had in place. And it is, you know, something that I will not hesitate to say uh is very, very important, and it's not just a book to put on itself. And I guess in in the transition of things, it never actually got adopted by the council. So that's what we're trying to do tonight. It kind of came out that it wasn't adopted in the process of some of the grant funding for the national disaster, for Easter and 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 COVID and related issues that we uh that we never officially adopted it by resolution. So what what you'll be doing tonight is officially adopting the hazard mitigation plan that was agreed to and approved in twenty eighteen uh by the council, so that we will be legal when it comes to hazard min- mitigation plans. And it's in your packet for you to read, and I'm more than happy to take any questions about it.
This a a resolution or it'll be a resolution?
Yes.
So, uh.
But any, anyone, any questions or discussion? About? Um, if if not, is there a motion to, and I don't know what the resolution number is.
Twelve. Twelve.
Twelve.
Is your motion to adopt resolution number twelve, the Phillips County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Helma West?
I shall move, Joe St. Columbia.
Mr. St. Columbia moves.
Number twelve.
Number twelve, is there a second?
Come on.
Second.
Is that Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Davis seconds the motion. Any other questions or comments on resolution number twelve? If not, call the row.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Crockett?
Yes.
Six yes.
Resolution is twelve passes. Thank you very much on that. Okay, the net, the last two items on the agenda, the next one is uh is goats, and um so it, if you, you probably noticed our goats, uh, are the goats that were in town or are in town. I'm not sure if they're still here or they've left yet. Um, the Department of Arkansas Harris actually hired them away from us to do some work over at the Delta Cultural Center. It actually helped us, cause it was on one of our city streets on Poplar, which is uh just almost completely covered up by kudzu. Um, the idea that this this company rented a room, room in it um out of middle Tennessee goes to, that's kind of what they do, is they go to cities with kudzu problems in the south. They've been doing it for quite a while. Um, I think we had three companies uh give us an estimate. They were the low bidder. But they also um had the only experience in kudzu in the south, so that that might have been more attractive, I thought. And it's a pilot project, uh, designed to see if this is something that's a good idea or not. Um, I I I still want to see how much they've completed before I guess we can answer that question. I I haven't seen a final bill, but I think it's about thirty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, for that, they can, you know, they uh all the the liability, the feeding and watering and upkeep, safety. All of those issues are on them as a company, and the city doesn't have to worry about that. And some of the research I did on it, uh, some of the problems would be, you know, dogs and and coyotes and things like that, killing the goats. Uh, keeping them maintained, fed and watered. I mean, it's it's a pretty big headache for a city to do on its own. So it's kind of a turnkey deal, and just really designed to see if if it worked, and I could probably talk about this all night. I don't want to do that. But ultimately, you know, I'm not, y'all already know how big a problem we have with kudzu. A lot of it is on the state highways now. Uh, the state highway department expressed an interest in maybe hiring them in the spring, uh, which would be great if they did. The the very short version of this is that they eat the leaves, and the leaves are what keep, the actual leaves themselves. Uh, it's what heat takes the energy to what they call a cluster under under the ground that keeps them alive. And and uh, once the leaves are eaten, there's no way to transfer that cellular energy back down into the clusters and they die. Provided that you keep, you know, you know, you have to be somewhat vigilant with it. Uh, but but anyway, um, it makes it easier to, if not win the war, at least turn the tide a little bit so that we can more easily maintain it and keep it cut off and cut back. Um, one speci- or two specific areas I was concerned about, and then I promise I'll be quiet and take questions. Um, the shop on Cherry Street, I mean, on Ohio Street, um, is a place that was overrun with kudzu. But also, we're we're wanting to clean that uh, that area up here in the next year. And, you know, one of the issues with code, for example, it would be nice to go down Ohio Street and some other areas and get it cleaned up. It's hard for us to throw the book at them when our own shop looks pretty bad. So the goal is to get our own shop cleaned up. Uh, and one of the problems was kudzu. Second thing was Fern Hill. Those towers up there behind the fire station are repeaters for our radios. And one of them is used for our tornado warning system. The kudzu lines act here with the power and the the uh efficiency of those radios, uh, towers. And of course, they've been growing up those things for years. And and if anybody pays attention to my Facebook page, you might have seen a picture of a face, I mean, of a kudzu bond that they cut off one of those tire towers that was.
Put that light off, bro.
Bigger.
Brain.
It was pretty amazing, so. Um, then the Department of Arkansas Harris hired them to do that work, and I don't know if they're still here or not, but um, that's basically the the, when I, if they're not gone, they'll be, will be gone soon. I don't anticipate that. I could be wrong about that. They might be doing some other things, but that's pretty much, whether it's an answer or not, I mean, you'd see. Really, we need to revisit it later. Uh, see if there are any alternatives or anything like that. Chemicals behind Fern Hill, we have used just about every chemical known to band there, and they just adapt, and it doesn't work very well. Um, now it's all, if you have a chance to drive up there, you'll see there's a clear path to the maintenance stations, which we had a hard time getting to. And they get inspected every year too, and uh, that's been a real problem, so. Fern Hill is a big deal. Uh, it's cleaned out now. If it, and of course, you know, it's not all gone, so it could come back. It could creep back if we don't maintain it, and we're gonna have to do that. Uh, we could also bring them back in the spring to do more work, uh, if that's something we wanted to do, but. So that's, I'll be quiet now. That's the goat, and quite a tourist attraction apparently, so. Any questions about the goat experiment? Uh, Mr. Jones said he was really happy with them, and I'd tell you that if he's still on the call. Okay, uh, and of course, I'm not going anywhere, so if anybody has any questions later, feel free to email me or call me or whatever. All right, the last issue on the agenda, the North Helma Community Center, I'm gonna, I'm gonna briefly update you on that and then open it up for discussion to people that want to talk about it. And that's the last item on the agenda. As you know better than I do, it was released, boys and girls club uh for for quite a while. Uh, and Ms. Ramsey might can help me with the dates on this a little bit better. But uh, they they stopped using the North Helma Community Center. Essentially, the roof was leaking other problems with it. So uh, they relinquished their lease to, back to the city of Helma, West Helma, and we have since fixed the leaks in the roof. And we've, we've done a few. And we've, we've done a few other things to it. Of course, it's on our insurance and we're responsible for the liability on it. And we pay utility bills on the building. When we received the building, because there was a lot of interest, a lot of people who wanted the building. And as I explained to them, it's not mine to give away a building. It's the public, it's the city's building. It's the council and the city's decision, not mine alone. But they could ask to lease it, parts of it for programs. About that time, the, uh, the, the COVID, what we were talking about then anyway, and we'd still like to do, is to reopen it as a community center, recreational center for, for Helen, the way it was when it was originally reopened. I think on the way back to the late seventies, when it was first given to the city by the National Guard and it was converted to a community rec center. There was a full-time person who worked there. It was a very successful program at the time. So I think the thinking on, most of us talking about was we, we want to get it back to that point. But COVID hit and so of course, as you know, it's hard to have recreational programs right now, especially in city facilities. Having said that, anybody who, until the council tells me otherwise, I guess, anybody who would like to use the center is welcome to request that as long as it's in writing and there's a COVID plan. That's pretty much where it is. During the Easter storm, a lot of keys were given out and access to the building because it was used quite a bit for food, water, a lot of things. And as happens a lot of times, too many people got too many keys and things were happening there without our knowledge. And as I said, we're liable for that facility, anything that goes on there. Not to mention that we still pay utility bills on it. And so the, the quickest way to, to, to try and get control of the building again was just to change the locks and get a new key. And that's what we did. And we have, uh, one place in the mayor's office has that key now. So that at least any unauthorized or unknown access to the building will be halted. However, there, there are several entities that have expressed an interest in it. And I've told them all the same thing. If they put it in writing and have a COVID plan and it looks reasonable, you know, we'll certainly try to work with them so that they can have programs there. Obviously, we'd love to have basketball, but we can't do that during COVID. But there are other things we can do and that's where it stands now. So I'll be quiet and open it up to those who would like to talk about this subject.
I, I got a couple of questions about it. I don't want to, I mean, I want the same respect as I've shown you. I was quiet and let you talk. But to the council, the, the mayor has, uh, there's a lot of things that have been going on with that center over there. You know, people were shooting basketball and all of these things over there. The, the mayor had, uh, Steve Cannon is on the phone call. And I, I mean, if, if the body would allow him to speak, the mayor had allowed him to open, to do a program. And the mayor started against some kickback about it. And the mayor was trying to say, you know, all these different things. But when it comes to that community center, due to the coronavirus, nothing was supposed to be held there. But the mayor allowed people to have, have things at the community center. Where there was basketball games, where there was, uh, Mr. Cannon had did some things there because the mayor gave him the approval to do it. And I think Mr. Cannon had some items at the community center he would like to get. Where the mayor changed the locks after the mayor had a conversation with Mr. Cannon, but he gave Mr. Cannon the approval to do all the things that he was doing. And the mayor came back saying, no, we ain't going to do this. And it was trying to put the blame off on me, which I don't know what was going on. I just got a couple of phone calls and I had did something that I didn't, weren't even aware of. Ms. Ramsey was put in the middle of something she didn't know what was going on. But my thing is you are, uh, it's a lot of things that goes on with that community center that we know nothing about. Where, if, if property belongs to the city council, we handle the property and the finances. But I don't like the fact that I was thrown in something, lied on about something that I have no knowledge of. Uh, I think the mayor owes me an apology for all that stuff that was going on that I knew nothing about. And like I said, Mr. Cannon is on the line. And I would like for the council to hear his concerns of what's been going on to, 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 to clear my name. Because I, I, I don't, I didn't know what was going on. I wasn't involved in nobody using the community center. But I would like to get my name cleared. And I would ask the mayor to please, uh, don't put any misinformation out about me because I don't know what's going on. But like I said, Mr. Cannon is on the line and he's been waiting. And I would like the council to, you know, hear what he has to say. And I, like I said, I, I don't think it's fair for me to be thrown into something that I have no knowledge of. So if the council will, uh, can they hear Mr. Cannon's concerns about his stuff at the community center he would like to get? And hear his concerns about what's happening to clear his name, to clear my name? Having people pointing the finger at me and Ms. Ramsey, we know nothing.
So moved.
Mr. Cannon, if you're on the phone, would you like to speak?
Okay, can, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is Mary Jackson. I'm a member of Apostle Cannon's church. Uh, I'm standing in a gap on behalf of him because he wasn't able to log in because he was in the middle of another engagement at the time. But, um, he did want to know a date and a time that he would be able to come over to get his items out of the community center. As well as he stated that the mayor also reached out to him and set up a meeting to speak with him on tomorrow in reference to the community center and getting his items out. And he deeply apologized that he wasn't able to get on tonight at this particular time.
Thank you, Ms. Jack. Well, I'm going to say real quick, that, that's correct. We're going to meet at 9:15 tomorrow. And if he wants to get his, his items out of there, he can. But I've also encouraged him to put in writing the after school program so that it can be followed the process and he could still use it as far as I'm concerned, unless y'all object to it. And as long as, you know, meets COVID guidelines and, and all that. But yes, that's, that's true. We've agreed to meet in the morning.
Okay. I just want to add something. I know Apostle Cannon and he would not do anything if he never had the approval to do it. And that's one thing that I can stand on. And it's not just because I'm a member of his church. I've been knowing him for some years and he wouldn't do anything like that. And, you know, just to hear something like that on the back end, after he noted he got the okay and the word and also access to a building and tend to then to come to find out he no longer have that access. You know, that was a disappointment, not just to him, but as well as to the kids that was in the community that was looking forward to doing something positive in that area. And so I just pray that, you know, things will be handled in a more decent and a more professional way in the near future versus than how it was handled this time.
Ms. Jackson.
Well, I, I could say this, Mr. Mayor, you know, the, the community center was being used and the, the city council knew nothing of it. And I just wish that you all, whatever that the mayor is doing and whoever is with, don't tell people it's me that's blocking anything because I had no knowledge of anybody using the community center or other, I mean, whether football, basketball, tennis, whatever they want anybody to use for. Don't try to play, don't play politics with, 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 with people about me because I, it has nothing to do with me. That's something the mayor did. The mayor saying, well, you go, Chris Franken don't want you in there. No, don't lie, don't do that to me because I don't know what's going on. I didn't give anybody any keys. I didn't grant anybody any access. But Ms. Jackson, you know, I know you've heard, I know Mr. Cannon has told you how they put me in the middle of this, right?
Yes, sir, I have heard that. And it was also a surprise to Apostle Cannon. But I do not want to elaborate any further because I prefer him to speak and voice his own opinion as to how he truly feel about the situation. I just wanted to get on to let everybody know that he wasn't able to speak for himself on tonight. But someone from his church was standing in a gap for him.
And that's just my thing, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I wish you, I mean, I, Mr. Mayor, whatever deal everybody has going on, uh, with this community center. I, I didn't, I didn't ask to be in it, don't want to be in it.
Yeah.
But, but to the mayor, uh, Ms. Ramsey didn't know and I certainly didn't know. But the mayor is, everybody's saying, well, uh, even the police chief is saying that I knew, I don't know, I don't know, it don't bother me because I'm trying to make a living. But I wish, Mayor, that you would be a man enough to handle these affairs with, with the city council. Don't throw me up under the bus. Don't say that I'm doing something because I don't know. I let you, I mean, that's something that you handled. And I, I see now that it's something else that you, you go in another direction with somebody else. You probably could have put something together with somebody else because whatever y'all decide to do, don't blame me, don't put me in there. Whatever somebody wants to do with the community center, if, if it's, if I'm just one vote, there are five other people that it has to go through and it'll be, I, I'd be so happy, Mr. Mayor, when you decide to do anything, leave my name out of it. Don't tell nobody, come talk to me. Mr. Mr. Valley had told us not to talk to Nate Harvey. Nate Harvey approached me and I told him just what the city attorney told. We cannot talk to him, but he said the mayor insisted that he talks to me. So I didn't talk to him. I called Mr. Valley that same day. Did I not, Mr. Valley call you and say, Mr. Harvey approached me? So Mayor, you have to be on the up and up about this, about what's going on. Don't put other people in, in position like, oh, they know. Because I don't, I don't know anything. That's all I'm saying there. Be truthful about what you're doing.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, well, you're asking me to be truthful, but in the process, you've said that I've spoken to Nate Harvey. I haven't spoken to Nate Harvey at all about this or probably anything else in a long time anyway. I did not know Nate Harvey was the guy that was playing basketball even. I just knew that we had people playing basketball in there that had a key that shouldn't have had a key and shouldn't have been playing basketball. And I found that out probably the same day I asked to, to change the locks. As far as Pastor Cannon is concerned, you know, I'm the one that, uh, that told him if he wanted to use the tennis courts over by his church, he could. And because they needed to be used. Also, as long as we, we couldn't have a haunted house inside the building, but we could have the drive-through Halloween event, which he did go through with. And I think was successful. I'm a fan of, uh, of Steve Cannon and I hope that he can continue to have his, his after school program even there. And we don't have any plan other than what I mentioned already, which would be if we, if we ever get through this COVID thing and we can go back to basketball and those kinds of activities to reopen it the way it was a long time ago. Having said that, anybody who wants to use it just simply has to put it in writing and take it and bring it to my office, tell us when they want it, use it, what they want to use it for and their COVID plan. And as long as it meets, uh, you know, acceptable use and all those cases, which I know Pastor Cannon would pass all those things. And I, and I'll have a problem with it. And that's what I told Pastor Cannon, which is why he thinks that I approved him using it. I did approve him using it for the Halloween event. I didn't make him do it in writing or anything because it was pending. But, uh, but yes, everybody has to put a plan in writing because it's a liability issue. And I did not give Pastor Cannon a key. I didn't give anybody a key other than a couple of our department heads during the Easter storm. But as these things can happen, that gets out of control. And I'm not here to point fingers or wag fingers at anybody. But as you don't want me to cast aspersions on your name, you should not cast aspersions on mine. And you were the one who wanted this on the agenda. And you were the one that said that I've done something about Nate Harvey, which is absolutely untrue and unfounded, that I've done, said things about Steve Cannon, which were completely unfounded. In fact, I'm trying to help Pastor Cannon and trying to help him help the community all I can. But it's not my building. It's the taxpayers' building. And so it has to be, there has to be a process and everybody has to be treated the same way. And that's all this is about. So I think it's mostly a communication problem. If, if I have offended anybody, I certainly, uh, want people to know that it was unintentional. And so I think in that spirit, Pastor Cannon and I are going to meet in the morning and try to figure this out and start all over without the complications brought in by politics and so forth. And try to do what's in the best interest of the community. But one of the things that's in the best interest of the community is that the facility is used in a public, in a way that is responsible to the public because it is their building, not, not my building. And so trying to get a control of access to the building became important when I found out that it was being used. Not just, I mean, I actually knew, I did know Pastor Cannon was using it. We just didn't have the plan in writing and that's, that's what I needed. But I did not know about some of these other uses and I didn't give them keys either. So I did tell you the responsible thing and regained access to that building for the city because we're paying the insurance and we're responsible for the liability and we're paying the utilities. And if I did anything less than that, I would be criticized and rightly so. So Ms. Frampton, you can pay all the gains you want. You can accuse me of things that aren't true. But that's, those are the facts. And I, I do appreciate Ms. Jackson for, for representing Pastor Cannon. But I want you to know, I hope that we can work something out and I think we will tomorrow morning.
Mr. Mayor, before, before we go, now, now, Mr. Mayor, now this is what gets me. And I'm, and I'm going to let it go after this. Now see, you saying things that, now you say you didn't know, then you say you did know. But I tell you what you did. If, if you didn't know Mr. Cannon was having some, you sure allow him to put a refrigerator in there? You allow him to have computers put in there? You told it's a flyer with your name on it that was on Facebook. Your name was on it. He was supposed to, so Mr. Mayor. Is that what you got going on? Now, I, 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 I don't want to go into detail because I can embarrass you because I have phone conversation, I have text messages. What you've been sending folks saying about the community center and blaming me, I have a recorded conversation with you and somebody that what you said about this community center. Now, if you want me to go, want me to go further, I can play those for you to embarrass you. I'm trying to be respectful to you as the mayor. Because I don't know what, I don't, I, I, I knew nothing about this community center. All I do know is the city council has a property and financing. And as a piece of property that we own, the city council needs to follow up with that. So, Mr. Mayor, we, I don't want to embarrass you. So I'm just going to be nice to you about it. Now I can let you hear these conversations that will embarrass you that were in the text message you sent out about this. I don't want to embarrass you, Mayor. So now I'm asking you again, I, I have, I have not done anything to you. And I, I don't, whatever you, whatever backdoor deals you and these preachers are making that you're trying to embarrass another preacher, whatever y'all got going on, you need to handle it. I'm not in that. I don't, when the boys and girls, it's, it's sad that when the Boys and Girls Club had the community center, uh, trying to do good things over it, you refused to have the roof fixed. Now somebody, now Carl, Carl Williams or whatever, he has fixed the roof, but it wouldn't, it wasn't fixed when the Boys and Girls Club was, was over there. This is one of those things that you have going on. I'm going to respect you, Mayor, but one thing about it, I know what was said. And, and matter of fact, I will plague them or I can sit forward all this to you. Matter of fact, council, I'll send it to you individually and let you all hear the conversation that the mayor had. So for him saying he don't know, oh, yes, ma'am, yes, sir, he does know. And, and, and Mayor, please don't involve me in, in, in your, in your, in your politics when it comes to these black churches, that you're trying to play them against each other. So do not, do not include me in that foolishness. Do not include me in that foolishness that you have going on because you play Apostle Cannon, you play with Jarvis Smith, you play that, that kind of game because you, you, you want access to something. You want them to guarantee you something. You want your name on, on, on any flyer that Steve Cannon put out. Your name was supposed to be on it. And you know what this is about. And I'm not going to embarrass this phone call. And you know what this is about. And I'm not gonna embarrass this phone call, but you dealing with these churches and you trying to play a game of politics. But I know the game that you're playing. So I'm, I'm, once again, I'm gonna respect you. But don't make me embarrass you because you, 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 you're talking too sided. Cause you know you gave, you know you gave Steve Cannon access, you own that Halloween flyer, on the after school flyer. You, he he had that after school flyer. Matter of fact, how about this? I'm gonna end this because I don't want nobody, the paper said that I'm authority aside. Mr. Mayor, you are, you know, you know what you're doing, but I'm, I'm gonna send counsel. I'm seeing each one of you all this message, the mayor had these conversations about, backdoor conversations. So you all have a good night. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get get into it with the mayor. I'm gonna leave respectfully, but I'm gonna make sure y'all get these notes.
I have a question.
Ms. Ford.
Um, any entity that wants to use the center or is granted access to use the center. Uh, and and I guess, you know, the armory, whatever it's called. They are under the umbrella, the insurance umbrella of the city. And that means if someone is hurt or whatever, uh, there's toward immunity.
I guess, you know, maybe Mr. Ballard could answer the toward immunity question. I'd feel better about it.
The the issue with toward immunity, it's our property and we're immune to the extent of our insurance. Uh, we're required to have insurance on the builder and whatever, uh, insurance. Uh, we can be liable up to the extent of our insurance for, for typically. Um, injuries are not covered, but on a structure where you have anything like that. There probably is something in the, in the insurance that covers that. But they cannot recover beyond the insurance, you know, policy.
Okay, so, so that's still, that still means that the, uh, entity, whoever is using it at that that time. They're, they're out of any, uh, litigation or anything, right? That they don't have any responsibility because the city has insurance.
That just made, that just made the city, uh, if they're hosting an event, they, we could be, uh, sued jointly. And they, they should be liable for whatever, whatever injury they've caused.
Okay, uh, so that. So what that mean, uh, when people are asking to use a center, that they need to have some type of insurance? Also?
That's a policy, that's a policy that you all would have to set. Uh, what the mayor has been doing, uh, and talking to you all tonight, just listening to the mayor, Mr. Franklin. Uh, both were saying the same thing from a different angle. The city council, ultimately, the people who make these decisions. About property, you're in charge of financing the real property. And, uh, if if you all wanted to do some type of contract to bid it out to a certain, to to let whomever rent it. And so do it. At at one point, we had an actual contract with the Boys and Girls Club, but the lease was broken. Uh, because we did not repair the roof. I don't know if the roof has been fully prepared or or would be to their satisfaction. At some point, they had said that they would come back if if the roof was repaired. I don't know if that's still available at this point. Uh, but those are things for you all, for you all to discuss as to how you all wanna do it. And whether a person should have insurance is something that you all can put as stipulation for rent, for a long term rent. I mean, short term rent, that's probably, uh, that's not something that 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 they should be required to have. But if you're doing a long term lease, that may be something to consider. Uh, but, uh, the mayor's insurance agent is well versed in all of that. And he's, he's committed, he's committed with with all the things. I don't have to be dirtshaped those things to him. Uh, but, uh, the only question they they is, at the, at the, at the end of the day, at the end of this discussion. Is whether you all are interested in, uh, doing some short term, long term lease. So I'd advise the mayor to do some short term, long term lease for somebody and and go from there. Uh, or is the city gonna get involved? I think the city terminated its, uh, parking and rest department. And so the city hadn't been involved in it at all since then. Uh, and, uh, but it's it's up to you all as to what you all wanna do. I encourage you all to come to some solution on it.
If I could just add a couple of quick important points. From the insurance side, as Mr. Ballard said, I I actually do this for a living. Uh, the city does not have a liability policy. The city has a property policy. And and with a high deductible, it does not revocable. So if there's damage to the property and it's caused by the entity that leases it, they need to have insurance for that. But a bigger threat is liability because we can still be sued. So for example, if a police car runs a stoplight, hits a car, hurts somebody, city can be sued and and we're mewed. But that doesn't mean we're not liable, uh, in the way, in the sense that it could be our fault. And it could ultimately go far enough that we would have to or we might just agree to pay. But the bottom line is we're still liable. So if somebody. Is using that facility and they're hurt because of something that was our negligence. Uh, we are immune because we're taxpayer based. And maybe that would, that would be enough. But if it were a serious enough event, it's definitely possible. Or we might settle with them out of court, you know, or a lot of options there. But the important question Ms. Ford asked is, should that entity have insurance? And the answer to that is yes. They should list, if they have a permanent ongoing program at another location. They should list that location on their current policy. So that if something were to happen to a child or something, then they would be sued first. And they would pay first, any kind of settlement in the city second. Okay, so at this moment, to be clear, but the facts. Nobody has submitted anything in writing to use the facility since the Boys and Girls Club left. Nobody. What I have told Pastor Cannon is, is a city facility and, uh, let him know we couldn't do the inside stuff at Halloween. But he could do the outdoor stuff, which he could. Uh, but he needed to give the city, not me, the city, because it's the taxpayers. And that's what he did. He he said the city, I believe. On the Halloween thing and that, yes, a after school program, I would love to see that. And I'd love to see him do it, but we have to put it in writing. So yes, I agreed to, and I still would, would, as far as I'm concerned, in favor of it. I think it's wonderful. But because of liability issues and things like that, it has to be in writing. That's really, it's just that simple. This whole thing is just that simple. Plus, you know, it is a city building. You can't just give out keys to everybody. And I didn't give out keys to anybody but people that work for the city, but as like I said, it proliferated. People got keys to show they had keys. And I didn't find out about it, uh, until right before I changed the locks. But, uh, it's still the case that if anybody wants to submit something to us in writing. And has a COVID plan included, we can consider that. And having said that, I'm, I'm at your, uh. You know, I'll do whatever you direct me that you think is best on those issues.
I don't want anybody to get me misconstrued or anything like that. I think the building is there, the building should be used. There is a need for it in our community, especially for our children. And with COVID, uh, after school, those type of programs that will help kids now with distant, distant learning. Uh, I just wanted to know where the liability, uh, lies and stuff and that, 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 that was my point. Uh, well, my question or concern.
Great question.
I I have a comment. And I I I don't know what all of that first stuff was about because I I I don't know what those facts are. But the entire discussion here. Leads me to the conclusion that, uh, first of all, we don't have a policy. As a city, we don't have a policy on these types of facilities. And it is abundantly obvious after all of these conversations that we need to adopt a policy on these structures and what happens to them. And that's gonna require, that's gonna require the council to take some action. Uh, because what we've basically done is we've ceded over our responsibility to the mayor's office about what happens to this piece of property. So if we wanna know what's going on and we wanna set the parameters about what happens to these city facilities, then we're gonna have to adopt a policy on it. And that's kinda all I have to say about it.
And that's perfectly okay with me because it certainly makes my life easier. And as you can see from this discussion. How easily, how easily it is for something to get out of hand and be misunderstood. When everybody, or most everybody anyway, has good intentions. So I I'd welcome a policy on it. In the meantime, I'm gonna meet with Pastor Cannon in the morning about his after school program. So it'd be nice to have any kind of direction on that while we're talking about it. I mean, any, anybody wanna tell me what they would like to see me do on that? I mean, one thing I am doing is making sure that nobody has access except the city. It's in the, and specifically in the mayor's office so that we don't have this problem again. But having said that, I mean, I'm at your disposal on this specific thing, which will come up in the morning. And I mean, I was just gonna say, I again, he needs to add it to his insurance policy, but other than that, it needs to be in writing. It needs to be a COVID plan. But other than that, you know, I'm, I'm, as everybody has said, you know, I want Mr., I want Pa- Pastor, Pastor Cannon. And anybody else who's trying to help the community to be able to do that. And I wanna, I want the city to be a partner in that. But it has to be done responsibly because it's owned by the taxpayers. It's not my personal building. So, uh, but I do, would be, welcome any, any direction you have on it, especially for my meeting in the morning since I. We're gonna talk about it. Well, I don't wanna keep everybody, but, uh, feel free to email me, text me, call me if you have anything that comes to mind between now and tomorrow morning. And I'll certainly take those, uh, considerations to heart when we talk about it in the morning. And also I'll follow up with you and let you know the outcome of that. But as far as Pastor Cannon goes, I wanna make sure we don't leave this discussion without saying. That his ministry has been really good for a lot of people in our community. Uh, I've supported it, uh, and I don't understand the conversation about. That was had earlier. I support what, uh, all the churches in our community are doing. Uh, there, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to think of something that the church is doing I don't approve of. Uh, they're one of the most effective resources for helping our community that we have. Uh, and and certainly a lot of people have asked to use the facility. I'm not, I haven't told anybody, no. I've just said that they need to put it in writing and bring it before our office first. And that's still the case and we gotta treat everybody the same as far as I'm concerned anyway. And that's still the case now. Uh, so, I haven't said that. I want, I mean, I certainly support Pastor Cannon's ministry. He's done good work. And I think I've shown that by my actions, not just my words. I've shown up at his events many times. And helped him use our tennis courts for basketball program and we can do that. And I'm trying to work with him on this. I just think it's gotten, uh, twisted in the wrong way for whatever reason. But I do think, uh, he does a lot of wonderful things for our community and I don't wanna leave this without saying that. Any other conversations or any other business for, come for the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Surely may adjourn it. Is there a second? If there is no objection, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank y'all very much and thank you for calling our guests as well.
Goodbye, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right.